It is July the 2nd, 2019. We're at 6:00 PM. We're here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council, regular council meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Father Stewart with the Good Shepherds Angelic Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by our own councilperson, Reiner. All rise, please.
He's not here.
Well, then we'll call on my friend Bobby Fennell to do the invocation, if you would, please, Bobby.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you. Thank you for the freedom we have in this country to meet in meetings such as this. Best for wisdom for our council members, our city manager, and to be with each of us as we go our separate ways tonight. Amen.
[inaudible 00:00:57] [inaudible 00:01:00] 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 [inaudible 00:01:00]
Bobby, thank you. How about that for a warning, huh? [laughing] We're going to start off tonight with a presentation presented by Jeff Gerber, the CEO of PGAL regarding the City of Granbury Police Station. You know, we've talked about this at our budget review, and so this is, council, this is just going to be a presentation. There'll be no action to be taken. So, Chris, you want to lead into this?
You bet. Thank you. Appreciate it. We do have Jeff Gerber, CEO of PGAL, with us tonight. He's been working with our police staff and working on spacing scenarios and workspace and workflows and trying to design a building that maximizes their efficiency while meeting the needs of the department for the next 40 years. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gerber and see what he can show us and educate us about. And he'll have, we'll have a time. If you have any questions, be sure and ask them at the end of his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So, as Chris said, we've been working with your team for the last several months, trying to figure out how big a facility that you need, so that it's not bigger than you need or smaller than you need, and then, in order to try to get to what a budget could be, so you guys can do some planning for that. So, this is the site that we were asked to look at, and so the location is up off of the future road that's up there on the left. Here's a blow-up of it here next. So, on the front of the building is a small public parking lot, and in the back is a secure staff lot with a couple of ways to get out in case one of the driveways is blocked, as well as a small impound lot that's in the back. So, this is a floor plan layout that we've been working with your team about. It started with a program that we did several months ago, and then it was to try to confirm how big it really needs to be. This plan has been worked on and modified a couple different times with your team. We had an interactive session here in your conference room behind the chambers here a few months ago. We believe in working and designing buildings from the inside out, so it's about how do you make them functional and make the flow be efficient, so that the building doesn't dictate any additional staff members and that you can, they can do their job as you charge them. So, the front of the building is on the left side of the screen, and the entrance, the yellow, sorry, this is not a pointer here, but the yellow is the main lobby with the training room on the bottom side of that, the large room in yellow. Across the lobby on the upper side is the records area, which will be the front door for the PD during normal working hours, where the public can go in and get asked and request records. Directly through the lobby is the area in lavender, that is the dispatch area that will be the, will be the front door of the building after hours. So, the dispatch area is located in that zone. Directly behind that lavender area is, in green, are the patrol spaces. Starting at the bottom of the bottom right-hand corner is the patrol offices for the team. There's a small briefing room that's located right in that same general area. In the middle green areas are the locker room facilities for both the men and women, as well as a small restroom facility. And then, in the larger green areas in the back are the fitness areas and other areas for them to do training in. The areas in the pink, right above the green, there are two vehicle inspection bays. One that is, will be used as a stall report, and the other is for vehicle inspections and for evidence retrieval. The pink area in the middle is the property room, as well as the lab, to be able to process any evidence that is either brought in by the patrol officers or is gathered out of the vehicles. The area in yellow at the top right is the administrative area that's for the chief and his immediate staff, is located there in the yellow area. And then, the last space is up in the blue, the light blue in the upper left, that is the CID, where the detectives are, where the hard interview rooms that they use to interrogate people and, as well as workspace for the detectives to do their, to do their business. So, it's a very compact plan that we've maximized the square footage of the use. We worked with your team to really understand what they were going to do and how many people and what the equipment was going to be in each space. That's why we drew it, so that we could make sure the building was as compact and least amount of square feet as we could make it. And so, it is a very compact, little tight plan. So, we also looked at a couple of elevation options for the building, and so we've developed six, and I'm going to show you all six of these. They are all using the same exact floor plan, so you can have the building look a lot of different ways with the same floor plan. We were asked to make sure that the building fits in the community and uses a lot of the same kinds of materials that are used on the other city buildings and other buildings in your, in your community. So, this is the first option that uses a stone, a field stone veneer, has a pitched roof on it, and the entrance is there with the three bays on the upper right. This is a second option, also using a different stone, but using a darker roof, a little bit different window treatments from the first option to give it a little bit different This one uses a complete gable roof that makes the roof a little bit taller. We used a little bit brighter color for this, put some dormers on there to give it a little bit of scale. This one is using a hip roof, so the roof gets a little bit smaller. Again, we use a different color here, just to show you some different personalities it can have. Again, different window configurations or shapes and sizes, just to give the building a little bit different look. This one is using masonry or brick as opposed to stone, again, using a hip roof. You can see that gives the building a little bit different character, a little bit different detailing around the windows. And then, this is the last one, which, again, uses a little bit different kind of architecture, a little exposed trusses, again, just trying to draw different things that you have in your community to be able to identify different approaches. These are all six of them together. Again, they use the same exact plan. We're just using different materials and different, the roof is really the primary difference in how we approach the windows, shapes and sizes, and obviously color. So, we've shown these to your team. They like a lot of these, but, you know, be interested if you guys have any feedback or any that you like or dislike would be, would be appreciative. So, I can stop here. I've got a budget sheet. You want me to come back to this?
Thank you. Is this floor plan anywhere in the state? Have you guys used this floor plan somewhere else that's already built?
We have not. We generally don't do that because we, what we found, and we do public safety projects all over the state of Texas. Every community is different. They have different staffing requirements. They have different staff levels, different services that they provide their community. And so, we believe the best way to maximize your department is to design it custom for your facility, for your team, for your community. And we have designed this to have a little bit of growth in staff, not much. In fact, I have, we went through, I won't go through the detail of this, but we see that we planned out the different growth in all the spaces, which is where we started. And so, that floor plan is about 29,000 square feet, gross square feet, and looking at an overall project budget, which includes not just construction costs, but all of the other costs that are associated with a police department, which includes, you know, design costs and, you know, engineering costs, furniture costs, and then contingencies that we recommend that you, you carry as the project budget for the overall project to be right under $13 million.
Thank you. Council, you have any questions for Mr. Gerber?
How much a square feet is that? 400?
It's, I can't see that number off the top of my head.
34880 is what it says. That includes the parking and everything.
Correct. So, what we did for Enterprise, we do all different kinds of public safety projects around the state of all different kinds of price points. We used a sort of a low-middle range for this project, and police buildings tend to be more expensive than others because of the hardening requirements that, one, that the building code requires, but also that a lot of communities want their police departments to be able to be, withstand storm events and, and also to have, protect against personal attacks as well. We had one of our police departments, we did for the city of McKinney a few years ago, that was actually attacked with an AK-41, and the building did protect the occupants of that building. So, they tend to be a little bit higher, higher price point than other, other kinds of buildings.
Could you go back to the slide with the layout and footprint?
The floor plan? Yes.
There was a question asked. I want to make sure I answered it right. The large room with the desk tables in the far left-hand bottom, that's a training room, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that'll hold how many people?
I think, I think we have 100 in that room, if I remember right. So, the room has really been designed for a couple of different functions. One is for not only the training of the local team, but to do regional training, but also lots of police departments have community events there to do education and also outreach types of events, so all of those can happen. That room is outside of the secure envelope of the building, so the public can go in and out of there without being able to penetrate deeper into the police department.
Mayor, I've got one more question.
Councilman Allen.
Is there a dispatch room in there?
Yes, sir. The lavender area, right in the, in the middle left side?
They pointed to minutes. Thank you.
Yes.
Council, any more questions or concerns about the layout or questions for this gentleman? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we do our citizens' participation. The city council provides an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda during the citizens' participation period at one city council meeting per month. It is subject to the following rules. A person wishing to address the city council must first register with the city secretary and provide the following information: their name, resident address, daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to be presented. Only one person may approach the microphone at one time, and only the person on the microphone upon recognition by the presiding officer will be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the presiding officer. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than the individual city council members or the staff, and the speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the city secretary, who will make the information available to the city council and the city manager if requested. The council will be allowed to receive input or information for the future agenda item, but will not be allowed to enter into discussion. This council shall allow a maximum of 30 minutes for the citizen's participation during the designated council meeting. And tonight, we have one speaker, Vicki Connors.
Hi, I'm Vicki Connors, and I'm a friend of Memorial Lane. I am a co-chair to the law enforcement section. And on behalf of the Friends of Memorial Lane Committee, we wish to invite everyone to attend our Texas Fallen Heroes Candlelight Ceremony this coming Sunday, July 7th, at the law enforcement site of Memorial Lane. It begins promptly at 8:00 PM. We'll have a roll call for all those 13 Texas law enforcement officers who, whose end of watch came since last July 7th. There will also be a special presentation to the Hall family. Mrs. Hall and her children still live in Granbury. Her husband's end of watch was September of 2018 while on duty with the Fort Worth Police Department. We can think of no better way to end our July 4th remembrance about how our freedoms are not free than to be a part of such a ceremony, and we encourage everyone to join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Did she say 8 o'clock? Thank you.
At this time, we'll move into our consent agenda. The first item being considered approving the city council meeting minutes of July 17th, 2019, annual budget workshop and the July 18th, 2019, regular meeting. And the second item being considered adopting ordinance number 1945 regarding requests from a landowners along Liberty Road to designate a no parking zone on the east side of Liberty Road between Acton Highway and US Highway 377 and authorizing the placement of the proper signage. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over the consent agenda items. Are there any changes or any of those items that you wish to pull off the consent agenda at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
I would like to pull off item number two for further discussion.
There's been a request to pull item number two off for further discussion. Council, any more changes or any requests there? We'll move item number two to the, to the number one item in the deliberation agenda. If no more comments, I entertain a motion to approve the item number one on the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Moving into the deliberation agenda, as I've stated, the first item on there would be to consider adopting ordinance number 1945 regarding the request from the landowners along Liberty Road to designate a no parking zone on the east side of Liberty Road between Acton Highway and US Highway 377, authorizing the placement of proper signage. Councilperson Mobley has pulled that off. Councilman Mobley, would you like to make statements on this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had several conversations with the owner of the car wash, who in the past, well up until now, has let his employees park across the street in front of Mr. Lucre's property. Have not contacted the tractor-trailer operator that leaves his trailer parked there, but in conversations with Mr. Lucre and the car wash owner, they've come to an agreement where the employees are going to park behind the bank over there and not block Mr. Lucre's property. What I would rather see, rather than us act on this and put a bunch of no parking signs up arbitrarily around the city to address each one of these individual items, I would like to do in this city what other cities have done, and that is come up with an ordinance citywide that, that limits the amount of time that unoccupied tractor-trailers can park on our city streets. So, I'd like to turn it to the staff and our city attorney to come up with something and bring it back in an ordinance rather than us spending, scatter-shooting this issue going forward.
Okay, thank you. Council, any more discussion on this item? So, I'm hearing a motion, you want to do that in the form of a motion to send this to the staff for consideration on a, an ordinance?
I'd like to take no action on this. Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
I'd like the motion that we deny the request of the landowner on Liberty Road to act on this item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council, any more discussion on this item?
Mayor?
Councilman Corrigan.
Chris, it's always been my understanding, along with, and I agree with Councilman Mobley's point, but don't we have some, something in place that says that tractor-trailers can't park in the same spot for more than three days?
No.
Okay. I thought we did.
And we have no prohibition against somebody unhooking their trailer, as in the picture, and leaving it there for five days. That's happened, and it's a little abusive. They're using our streets in Ridgeway for personal profit, and that's against the Constitution.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
I would like, again, to direct the staff to come up with something. The city of Fort Worth limits it to two hours unoccupied on city streets, and I think if it's going to be, they're longer than that, we probably need to do something about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Reiner.
I do want to address the unoccupied portion of that, though if they're using it to sleep in the tractor, you know, overnight, I don't know if that's happening. It's just a thought. We might need to address that in some other manner as well, so we don't have them, if they're, I mean legally, if our code says if they, it needs to be unoccupied for two hours, then they can sleep overnight. Correct? Am I correct?
They shouldn't be able to sleep on your streets.
That's what I'm saying. We need to address that.
I'll just entertain you all, make a motion, direct us what you want, and we'll get her done.
I like the sound of that.
Perfect.
I like the sound of that.
Mayor, I got a question.
Councilman Allen.
I think it's a good idea, but we've got to be real careful, because I know where you live out there, when they're just going to have a carnival, y'all were talking about people parking on the roads and stuff, and your kids were coming out for graduation, and they'd be parking there, and so if we do it in all neighborhoods, all city streets, we've got to really be careful, because a lot of neighborhoods park on the street.
You know, we're talking about tractor-trailers, right?
They park?
You know, we're talking about, we're not talking about personal vehicles.
Talking about tractor-trailers.
Just trailers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make it special, yeah.
I taught you something about.
But right now, we're going to, on the agenda item here, it's to consider adopting yours, and we have a motion to deny that adoption that, right now, and we have a second on that. Right? Okay.
You do it first.
Any more discussion?
I'll give you the credit.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is not adopted. So, I think are there need to make a further motion for the staff, or do we need to do that?
Just to be clear, you want an ordinance?
Yes.
That prohibits tractor-trailers or the tractor-trailer unit from being parked more than two hours on a city street?
Yes.
Okay. We'll see what we can do.
That's, that's a good start, yeah. Take a look at it.
Well, we will benchmark the Fort Worth ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our next item in the, on the deliberation agenda is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number 1946. Chris, do you have a staff report on that?
Yes, I would like to turn it over to Scott Sobchek, and he's going to go through these items with the public hearing for us.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Mr. Manager. What we have is a request from Tim and Nancy Reynolds for a specific use permit to allow for two guest suite unhosed bed and breakfasts on 125 South Travis Street. The properties currently zoned are seven. Again, this would be unhoseded where the resident occupant, in essence, would not reside there, and they would lease out the structure. The ordinance requires two parking spaces to be installed on site. These are typically striped after the council approval of the SUP. The city staff went through the supplemental standards for the, for the B&amp;B, and the applicant is well aware of them. We sent out 26 notices to all adjoining owners within 200 feet of the subject site. As of this time, the city staff has not received any protest. Notice was published in the Hood County News as required by state statute, and we have three letters in support of the request from the joint property owners. Your planning and zoning commission recommended unanimous approval by a vote of five a's and zero nays. Approval of the SUP for the two-guest suite B&amp;B with the following conditions. These are our standard conditions: the striping, the supplemental standards with the wired smoke alarm, and then, as this is a new site, initiating it for a one-year term. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll turn it over to the public. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concern on this item to Scott or the staff? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to, to approve the said SUP with the said conditions.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen and a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The next item is a public hearing, Consider Adopting Ordinance Number 1947. Here again, we'll call upon Scott Sobchek to give us some background on this. Please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Similarly, this is another two-guest suite unhoseded B&amp;B. This is actually located on Bridge Street, west of Morgan, at the very dead end or the terminus of the street. It's zoned, single-family residential, R8.4. This is a new site as well. As it being unhoseded, they are required to have two parking spots. They will be striped after the action on the SUP if it goes, if it's approved. This is a site of, a picture of the site. You can see the two parking spaces to the right. They're, again, aware of the supplemental standards. 18 notices were sent out to adjoining property owners within 200 feet. We published in the Hood County News. As of tonight, we've seen, we've received one letter in support, zero in opposition, and these are the same supplemental conditions that we imposed with the previous SUP as well. Again, another one-year term, as this is a new site. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing now. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any question or concern to the staff on this item? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the said SUP with the said conditions.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion on this item?
Just glad to see them. Just glad to see a lot of these bed and breakfasts come, and mine's just in Frederick's firm. Great. Need more.
More discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number five is a public hearing, Consider Adopting Ordinance Number 1948. Once again, I'll call upon Scott to give us a staff report on that one, if you would, please, Scott.
This is a regular level of freedom. It should be for, it's tired. This is a regular, uh, free, uh, S U P for, uh, it's hired. And, uh, so, pretty, about a year ago, we had a one-year term on the thing, and I'm well aware, that's, um, in the, uh, I put on, really, the side, the, uh, the, uh, so what you're doing is since then, uh, maybe half, we turned this, uh, seed zone, and placed on the site, and, uh, unfortunately, they didn't do the work, and, uh, the timing of that patch, and, and the S U P came out, so they're almost ready to open. Um, they also need to wait, uh, 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 the S U P is not four times, uh, over here, it's actually four outside display, the tire rack, that's what we're out there. Uh, there's a 10% allowance for the, uh, area that we have, given the size of the building, that's straight in some, uh, three hundred square foot.
Wow.
Oh, yeah.
So that would restrict the area for the outside display to roughly 300 square foot. They're aware of that. Your planning and zoning commission unanimously by a vote of five a's, zero nays, recommended a, to approve the S U P for a one-year term. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the, to the public. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselman Mobley.
Scott, how big is the display area outside?
It's, uh, so the building itself is 3,480 square feet, so it's 10% of that. So a little under 350 square feet for the display area.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions for staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the S U P with the, he said, conditions.
So moved.
I have a motion by Counselman Wadley.
Second.
And a second by Counselman Gorgon. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number six is a public hearing and consider approving a request of Vicky Nevens to replat lot two R Block 1 of the old addition to recognize the abandon of an approx, approximately 10 by 144 section of a public alley. Scott, I'm going to call upon you to get a staff report on that one, if you would please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have is roughly a couple of lots that comprise a little over one acre, a property zone like commercial. It's got a little bit of plating history to it. We, the city council recently acted upon the vacation and abandonment of the easement to that, back portion of the site. The plat doesn't formalize that. That document's already filed, but it will be recognized on that plat per document number with a notation. The purpose is to combine those three lots into a single lot of record, also acknowledging that abandonment. You can see the site there. Here's the formal plat that's being submitted, and the, the property lines and the easements. In the upper right-hand corner of the platted boundary, you can see that alleyway being recognized in that kind of dark shaded gray color. There are no variances associated with this particular plat. As such, this plat becomes ministerial. Your planning commission recommended approval of it as presented by a vote of five a's, zero nays.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff on this item? If none, I entertain a motion to approve the said replat.
So moved.
I have that motion by Counselperson Reiner and a second by Counselman Allen. I'm going to get you over there.
That's all right.
Any more discussion, Counsel?
Too many, of course.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number seven is a public hearing and consider approving a request of John Henry Luton, grant or trust to amend the approved preliminary plat for a 6.570 acre tract for the Thomas Malone survey. Once again, I'm going to call him Scott to give us a staff report on that, please.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, what we have is an existing preliminary plat showing that that area bounded in teal is one lot currently as Lot 7. That's being proposed by the applicant as to, to take that lot, Lot 7, into Lot A and B, as presented on the plat. See if I can get it there. You can see the vertical lot going north-south, and then the remaining balance of that fronting Peck Road to the east would be Lot 7B. So we're creating two platted sites out of this. The, we have a focus on 7A, which is the north-south type lot fronting 377, which will have cross-access to the eastern and western lots. There are no variances associated with this plat. Again, it's a amendment to the preliminary plat, only to create that second lot and subdivide it. Again, no variances, so your planning and zoning commission recommended five-zero approval as presented by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing on this item. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns to staff on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended preliminary plat as presented.
So moved.
I have that motion by Counselperson Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Counselman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider then following, we've got a, execute an FIA and also a replat. Scott, once again, I'd like to have you give a staff report on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We saw this as a preliminary plat application recently. This is to develop the area that's shaded or bounded in teal. It's notated as MF or multi-family. This is to support an apartment complex that we saw recently as a site plan and a preliminary plat amendment. And there's the site, and here's the site plan. It's on Granberry Water, Granberry Electrical Services. The FIA, little over 429,000, is being presented. They secured it with a irrevocable letter of credit. They acknowledged that the, the part fee is required, so they submitted a letter. Typically, we receive those when we get the M I L R at the time of filing the final plat, so they're aware of that. No variances are associated with this particular plat, therefore it's ministerial in its scope. Your planning and zoning commission recommends approval by a vote of five a's and zero nays. Approval as presented.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the hearing to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? You guys are awful quiet tonight. I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns to the staff on this item? This is a two-part item here. First, we'll go ahead and execute the, the FIA. So I'll entertain a motion to execute the said FIA.
So moved.
I have that motion by Counselman Gorgon. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Counselperson Reiner. Counsel, any more discussion? All in favor of the said FIA, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Counsel, now we'll move into the final plat. Are there any discussion to staff on the final plat as stated? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the said final plat.
So moved.
I have that motion by Counselman Gorgon.
Second.
And a second by Counselman Wadley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That final plat is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and, I'm sorry. Our next item is the public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number 1937. As you recall, Counsel, we tabled this, so the first motion I'd like to take is to, a motion to take this off the table.
So moved.
I have that motion by Counselman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Counselperson Reiner. Counsel, any more discussion? All in favor of taking this off the table, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is off the table. That item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number 1937. Chris, are you going to speak on this one, or Scott?
Um, we, we bring, we're bringing this back because if we are going to remand it back to the planning and zoning, we need directions from y'all on the record, having us do that. You want to add anything to that, Scott?
No, other than we're based on Counsel's direction, we're currently in the throes of submitting the entire article for Land Use Matrix with all the S U Ps to look at them comprehensively as directed by the city council. So this would just get lumped in, and we would just look at the entire matrix, again, comprehensively. So that's, that's the purpose of it.
Yeah, and I would recommend that unless there's a special need to move forward based on a particular project or something that may or may not be occurring, I guess.
So you'd recommend remanding it back to P and Z for?
Detailed, detailed research.
Okay, detailed research.
Because, you know, what we don't want is to amend something and have an unintended consequence that's hard to see down.
City staff is aware that we can have that dialogue with P and Z and the city attorney possibly.
This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any more questions for staff on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to remand this back to the P and Z for further detailed research.
So moved.
I have that motion by Counselman Wadley.
Second.
And a second by Counselperson Reiner. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Look forward to another report on that. Item number 10 is to consider executing, executing an FIA between RV Quality Concrete and the City of Granberry. Is this Scott, or you? Okay, I'm going to turn this one over to Chris Kaufman.
Thank you. Rick's approaching the lectern, but as he comes, I'd just like to inform you that the project originally was going to be a fourplex apartment complex, and the owner of it has provided a written letter to us stating that he will convert it to a duplex, and the duplex does not require special fire suppression requirements, and so there's a picture of what was built in 2013, according to the tax records. And so we will have to do an inspection on that facility once it's changed, and then we'll be able to allow the service, the utility service to be connected. But at this time, what we're asking is to execute, allow the council to, or allow the staff to execute the facilities improvement agreement between RV Quality Concrete for this sewer extension that will allow those duplexes, or duplex to be operational. He was willing to tear that building down and build a house there at this point, so when he learned that he could have a duplex, he may change this whole thing. I don't know what he's going to do, so.
Been sitting there for six years, seven years now?
Yes, sir. Without being served, yes. So, Rick, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I don't think so. Both city engineers here tonight and the applicant's engineers here as well for questions.
Staff has no objections to the process moving forward under those conditions.
Counsel, do you have any questions for the staff on this item? You know, we've talked about this at a prior council meeting. And as you see, he's now, it's now a duplex and not an apartment complex, so.
I have one.
Counselman Wadley.
As a fourplex, it probably has four kitchens in it. Like, it's set up for, for four residences. If you make it a duplex and nothing's really changed, what would prevent one duplex from sub-living the upper or lower level where there's still four different families living there? I mean, if they, they call it a duplex, but it could, unless something's actually changed, it only has one entrance, for example, you know, you can't really tell someone to take a kitchen out, but, I mean, how many houses have kitchens upstairs and downstairs? You know what I'm saying? What would prevent it from still being used as a fourplex?
Well, um, they would have to be inspected and approved by the building official in order to, to do that.
I guess my point is, they call it a duplex.
To receive a certificate of occupancy.
And, and, and they get their C O as a duplex, and then you have four families living there three years from now. How would you know that?
It's a good question. I don't know.
Did they ever have the kitchens already in?
Oh, yeah.
Sure it is, yeah.
I have not been there. Is Mr. Cook in the audience?
He is not.
Okay.
No.
What'd you say, Mr. Campbell?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have two lecterns here, but still they could be.
So it's intended A and intended B split the bill, I mean.
I, I don't know how he's planning on reconfiguring this building, but like I said, he was willing to bulldoze it and start over and build a single-family home there if he could get the sewer service, so. All I've been able to get out of the engineer is a letter signed by the owner. I've never met with the man.
I guess my thought was at the last meeting, when it was pointed out that they didn't have fire suppression, we were going to look into that, so apparently they don't.
Right.
And by just calling it a duplex, they get circumvent an ordinance.
Right.
You know, that's, that's what, that's the way I saw this when I saw it on the agenda.
Well, you do have the option of denying the FIA and remanding it back to staff to get more information, more assurances of how this piece of property developed will meet the fire code.
But again, it would not receive a certificate of occupancy until the building official approved, approved it.
Right.
And not only that, they don't, we don't have to prove a tap for that line either, so. There are a couple of options.
I've got a question, Mayor.
So.
Counselman Allen, you got a question?
Yes, thank you. Has any of our staff went out there and inspected this thing?
I have not been in there.
Mr. Cook has.
Jim has.
Is he here?
No.
Because, I, I mean, I think that's a good point you brought up.
It's a fourplex.
Yes, sir.
Right now, sitting there is a fourplex.
And I'm telling you, if they get in there, and all they can do is say, hey, let's split, I'll rent you this deal, and I'll pay the water bill, or I'll pay the light bill, and keep going.
I think Mr. McKay's in the audience.
He is.
Is he in the audience here?
Yes.
Applicant's engineer is here.
Would you want to, would you want to speak on any of these questions? I mean, you're about as close as we can get to the owner, I guess, right now.
The question at hand is, are we going to be able to have the service put to us with what my client has agreed to do, which is to convert the building from a four flat plex to a two plex? Obviously, in any, in any endeavor in life, it's hard to understand, to know what might happen and what to regulate toward that. However, I would, I would point out that, that the question at hand is, given that my client was willing to tear his building down, but in the discourse of my discussions with the building inspector, and that's, and that I had about a week ago, we were told that if we converted it to a duplex, then we could, we could continue with the process. I think it's incorrect to say that's an effort to circumvent the ordinance. What we're trying to do is to comply with the ordinance, and that's the way in which we can. It's an unfortunate situation, and we have a building out there that we have no, no way to serve it. We cannot get service from the county. I went through all of those traps. I will remind the council, this is also an E T J, so that, that complicates things in a, in a certain respect, as far as inspections and the jurisdictions there. That's one of the reasons why we didn't pursue the fourplex, is because of the complications that, that would happen due to the inspections and the jurisdictions and all the things that would need to be done as far as the inspections go. So it, it appeared that the best course of action that was good for both my client and, and addressed the concerns of the city to convert this to a duplex. So that's kind of where we are now. It's an effort on my client's part to, to recognize the city's concerns and to, so that he can move forward with this, with this building.
When you use the term convert, are, is, so you're going to, they're going to go in and do some construction in here? They're going to demol, take out a kitchen, or take out, what are they, what's the conversion going to be?
I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what the particulars of the construction is, but it is my, my understanding that he would go in and, and do whatever is necessary construction-wise to make it a duplex.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselperson Reiner.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a clear definition in our code somewhere as to what a duplex looks like, that they will be followed? that they will be following to, to do this?
Could I get you to speak in the mic? I'm barely hearing you. I'm sorry.
As close as it can get, I think. I'll try.
The, the question was, is do we have a clear definition in our code of what a duplex consists of? Is that the question?
Yes, question.
Yes, we do. And that, the way this building is currently configured does not meet that definition. However, I'm not sure what the builder's willing to do, um, to reconfigure that building. He did offer to bulldoze it and start over with a single-family dwelling.
I understand that. My, my question is, though, we don't, do we have it in writing, or?
We do have it in a letter that appears to be signed. I've never met the gentleman. I've got a letter that's, that's typewritten and signed by, uh, Mr., I don't even, I can't pronounce his name.
Actually, if I might address that, I, I, uh, composed the letter for the client, described to him what, uh, what it was, and met with him, uh, and did witness his signature on that, so it is definitely.
Is there any way to get him to come and visit with me or staff about this?
Uh, yes, that, we could do that. Although, uh, you know, we've, we've already been kind of waiting on this for a while.
Well, you've been waiting since 2013, so.
That's correct.
I'm not too worried by the time.
Mr. Wadley brought up a very good point, and I just want to address that.
I agree.
And without a clear definition of what it is a duplex looks like in this town, I'm not sure that we can actually move forward. And I'm not trying to put the kibosh on this by any stretch, but I think we really need to be clear on this before we, and I understand that he was willing to demolish and create a single-family home, but we still have real, no real direction as to what a duplex looks like.
And my question to you, Chris, is would, would we be inspecting this if they converted it over?
Yes. Because, because we're in, we are, we are in, entrusted to enforce the fire code.
If I might, if I might speak to that.
Okay.
If I might speak to that, the, uh, what we have agreed to as, as the builder is to allow that inspection, uh, it's my understanding now, because we're in the E T J, well, let me back up a little bit. Uh, the whole discussion from the last meeting was more in the area of fire protection rather than, than codes.
That's all we're worried about, is fire protection.
Right. And so, uh, we're, we were, and we, as part of our discussions with the city, we offered for, we offered to allow the city inspector to come in when we're getting ready to make the connection so that they can, uh, be assured that, uh, that the conversions had taken place. So, that is something that, that we recognized, and that's what I was alluding to earlier in terms of how messy it gets when you're in the E T J as far as codes go and that sort of thing, uh, so that we can move the, the project forward, we have been willing to, to, uh, waive that, uh, to a certain extent, to allow those inspections that we can move forward with it, so that we can be more transparent in that regard, uh, so that we can move, basically move forward.
And just so everybody realizes, it is in the E T J. Uh, you know, it's in the Western Hills, or not Western Hills, in the east side.
Eastwood.
Eastwood subdivision. And we do have the authority to do fire inspections anywhere where required, and we do have the authority to disconnect utilities upon failure to meet the fire code, uh, whether it's in the city or in the E T J. So, uh, there is a little bit of, uh, of, of a trigger there to be able to stop the, the risk should we see it, uh, up here.
But answer, but answering Councilman Wadley's question, how would we know that? And I guess just off an inspection.
It would be generated from a complaint.
Right, that's right.
Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
You know, the threat and to tear it down, I think's ridiculous.
I agree.
You got a good shell there, uh, you go in there and remodel that and make it a single-family? I don't think anybody would want to have a home with, with four dining rooms and four kitchens and all that good stuff, and, you know, if the man's not willing to come up here and at least talk to our city manager, I don't have a lot of faith in this thing, I'm sorry.
Uh, well, I, if I might address that as well.
You may.
Uh, it's really not that untypical to, uh, have someone such as myself to represent him.
But you can't give us answers, oh.
Uh, that to us, true, yes. But as his representative, I, uh, in this particular case, I'm speaking for him.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Corrigan.
So, just to, to roll this all together, make sure I'm understanding this correctly.
Pull that mic down a little bit.
The, uh, the applicant is paying for and installing the line. Is that correct?
The, yes, sewer extension.
Okay.
The $44,000.
Okay. It has to be to get our water service.
No, they, they already have water with.
I mean, to get our sewer service. Jim is gonna have to go in and do his job in inspections, so I don't have a problem voting yes to move forward, knowing that, because in the event that it gets installed and they haven't done the necessary things to meet the fire code and make the city comfortable with what's there, it doesn't get cooked up. Is that correct, in line with that?
You don't have to do the fire code, though. You could just do it too, right?
Right, correct.
Well, you don't have to have fire suppression.
For a duplex.
For a duplex.
But the city still has the right.
Mm-hmm.
Or the option to say, you, you put this in, but we don't have to let you hook up to it.
Mm-hmm. That is correct.
Okay.
It has to meet the, the fire code, and meeting the fire code requires an inspection, so.
With that, I will, uh, make a motion.
Okay, what's your motion?
To approve, as in the item 10.
So, we have a motion to execute the said F I A?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
On the table to approve the said F I A, with a second by Councilperson Wadley. Any more discussion, Counsel, on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Raise your hand for the nays. So, we have two nays and three ayes. That is approved.
Thank you very much.
Four. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm still not used to counting myself. So, that is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.